Go ahead and call to me, Nordor. First item is roll call.
Alderman Baman.
Here.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Stratton.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman West.
Uh, next time the invocation was by, uh, the administrator, Ryan Hudson-See, being called by explosive legends from Alderman West.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the proceedings that we have here tonight. Thank you for this group of people that's come to show up in this elected body that serves the city. God, I just pray that, um, each officer that we pin tonight, that you bless them, that you give them your, your protection, uh, to carry out their duties and, and be representative of each of us and keep our, our residents and our visitors safe as well. God, please be over the business that we, uh, that we handle tonight, and I ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
(inaudible)
Next up is approval of the, approval of the agenda.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
I see no changes. Move on to police officer oath of office. We have Shonda Hayes Donald, Nathan Holt, Cameron Skinner, and Andrew Taylor. Please say that all come forward, please.
(laughing)
Congratulations.
Uh, next item is a proclamation. It's a proclamation for stand-up for Stanley.
Okay.
City of Green Valley Missouri proclamation. Whereas Stanley is a three-year-old English bulldog born with a bilateral left lip, birth defect that is uncommon, but does exist in large and small breeds regardless of pedigree. Whereas Stanley has become the ambassador to the smile train, Stanley is helping children in different countries born with cleft lips and bowels receive free surgeries as they themselves are often shunned, bullied, and even destroyed. Whereas Stanley was born with a curved spine, heterochromia, and deformities in his back legs. Stanley uses these challenges as tools to teach children about differences in hopes to stop bullying and suicide among our youth by showing that it is okay to be different. Whereas Stanley shows no judgment nor opinion. Stanley has established a bond with the homeless, the elderly, the disabled, and the veterans, giving each the understanding needed as they so desire to be accepted for who they are. Whereas Stanley is a symbol of acceptance and has no boundaries when there is a need to be met. Stanley has partnered with the American Childhood Cancer Organization to become the first founding hope chapter of the state of Missouri as he founded BS One More Thought, a nonprofit group that helps children with cancer both locally and across the state. Whereas Stanley teaches us that we are all different, and very unique, and through our uniqueness we bring gifts and talents that add beauty to our world and hope for a better tomorrow. Differences should be embraced, not judged. Now therefore, may it proclaim, City of Green Valley, Board of Alderman, and I, Mayor Mike Todd, acknowledge the outstanding service of Stanley and the works of his owner, owner, Deborah Pack. Set the city's seal on this seventh, actually ninth day of July two thousand eighteen, Mayor Mike Todd.
(laughing)
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 Hi, uh, I'm Felicia Bergen. My address is four oh seven Northeast Wolf Creek Drive. Um, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the fireworks issue, which I know is on the agenda. I was told this is the right time to do that.
Yes, yep.
Um, I did a lot of research about all of the cities in the Kansas City metro and their allowable discharge date, um, and I believe this guy, this list with you, um, but, um, kind of the bullet point is that Green Valley is among only three cities in the Kansas City metro that allows firework discharge for over four days, um, and it's also one of only four cities that allows it beyond July, um, July fourth. It's actually the only city in the Kansas City metro that allows firework discharge beyond July fifth, which this year we did to the seventh. Um, so it just kind of has a snapshot of that, um, has all of the cities in the metro which days they, um, allow discharge and the total number of days, the vast majority being two, three, and four days. Um, Belton, Parkville, and Green Valley being the only ones that are five days or above. Um, I just think that that's important to note, the, where we lie with all of our peers in the metro, including like Oak Grove and, uh, Blue Springs. Um, I know it's been talked about a lot and, you know, I have as much patriotic pride as, as everybody else, you know, I have, um, family members and, and loved ones who have served in the military, which, and you know, I, I'm a big history buff, um, however, I think, my husband's one of those that like never gets July fourth off, but I don't think that the cities should cater to us by any means. I think that they should be allowed to discharge their fireworks on the third, fourth, whatever days the city deems necessary, however, like this year where we had a total of, um, it was, I think it was five days this year, um, it, it was just kind of excessive, like the Valley Speedway was the only time in, um, that the city kind of did fireworks. That was actually before those five days, so that would be the Saturday prior, um, and so people kind of took that as the, as the takeoff, they were firing fireworks off the first, the second, when it didn't actually start until the third. Um, I know it's supposed to be enforced, um, but as somebody who has called the non-emergency number to report them on multiple occasions for discharging on days or times that were not within the, um, spectrum, I can tell you that over an hour later, nobody ever came out, and by the time somebody did come out, you know, two hours later, everything was over with, 'cause most people can't afford to fire off fireworks for more than two hours in a row. Uh, that gets really expensive. Um, and I'm not talking about little sprinklers and stuff, I mean, I'm referring to the big ones that kind of shake your house. Um, I live right next to a huge empty field, so of course I live next to what people consider the fireworks field, and so I kind of get affected by that a lot, um, but you know, we've learned loud music, earplugs, whatever, for those few days, but just five plus days just seems a little excessive. Um, can I give this to you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the board?
See, now move on to the consent agenda.
(inaudible)
I have most of Alderman West approved the consent agenda. Do you have a second?
Uh-huh.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion?
(inaudible)
Non-therapy, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Seeing the previous business, move on to new business. Uh, first item under new business is discharge of fireworks. Uh, future regulations?
I, I'll take a start here. I had asked Theresa to put this on tonight, why it was fresh in everyone's mind, 'cause I know typically the last several years, we, you know, kind of looked at it, the meeting before, the four, and if the date needs to be adjusted due to how the fourth fell, and kind of did that this year with the fourth falling on a Wednesday, allowing people, you know, extending it so they get a weekend in there. Uh, so that was one aspect I wanted to talk about, was actually getting, you know, set dates in the ordinance where that's not being discussed every year beforehand, and the next thing I want to look at is the actual, uh, enforcement part of it, 'cause I know that right now, it's, you know, right now our tents open in town, I think on the twenty-eighth, so, you know, even though this year there weren't a lot of team officers, third, we were getting a lot of discharge before, you know, before the third, and I can tell you, I was listening to the radio, and I know the, the officers, they would get dispatched to them, but, you know, then they get a nine-one call or something else, you know, fireworks is gonna go to, you know, it's gonna get bumped down on the priority list, and I can tell you, there were so many of them the Saturday before the fourth, that there was just no way they could, they could go to all of them, 'cause I was listening to them come in, they just, they couldn't get to them. Like she said, you know, two hours later, by the time they got there, then people are done or up. So, you know, I think we need to look at, you know, enforcement in the future, if that means, you know, budgeting for more officers during that time that we know there's gonna be, you know, fireworks set off, that they're outside of time, I think we need to look at that. And the reason I want to bring up this year is just to say, you know, every year it seems like I've, you know, I get more and more, you know, people contacting me regarding it. I probably had over, around, I had about around thirty people this year contacting regarding it, uh, it's grown every year, so, I mean, nobody is saying, hey, let's, you know, get rid of them, or, you know, not do fireworks or something, even with that, everyone just wants set days, and then to know that we're gonna be able to enforce them outside of, of those days. So, I am open to suggestions, I mean, I think the given is, I mean, I, I think you definitely allow them on the third and the fourth, and I think that's a given. Beyond that, I think is kind of where we're at, and we always try to include a weekend in there, and I had talked to Alderman Headley and Ryan about it, and I was kind of thinking, you know, if you wanted to include a weekend, you can include like the first Saturday of the month, that way you're not always, you know, so you would have the third, fourth, and then the first Saturday, I mean, that could fall before the fourth, it could fall after the fourth, but that way they're still getting a weekend in there also. And if you wanted to go, I mean, that would be three days, if you wanted to go to four days, you could do the first Friday of the month also, and it's kind of up to what you guys want to do, but we'd like to get it in, in ordinance so it's set, and right now the ordinance is kind of choppy, there was like a reference, what, two thousand thirteen in there or something?
Yeah, the most recent rendition was in two thousand thirteen, it was, uh, it was an amendment to the existing, the existing ordinance, uh, which specifically spoke to the year of two thousand thirteen, and then it set the regular times, uh, for years beyond that, so I think, Mr. Mayor, you're suggesting probably a cleanup, getting some consistent hours as well as consistent days.
I think the hours change too, don't they?
Yeah.
Depend on the day.
Yeah, the third, um, of July is from one P M. to eleven P M., and the fourth, uh, and the fifth of July, it's from nine A M. to eleven P M.
And I know that was, that caused some issue, I mean, I, I know dispatchers confused on that as well, 'cause, you know, there are dispatches with six or seven different agencies, and I know some of the cities were going to midnight, so I know some of our residents were calling at like eleven-thirty saying, hey, and dispatch was saying, well, they have till midnight. Well, not really, they do in the other town, and the dispatch can't keep track of, you know, everybody's fireworks ordinance, so, along with that, I almost, you know, Alderman Headley brought up to me that, you know, I think we need to, whatever we choose, you know, we make it a requirement of the fireworks tents, but like a rule of the, or like a copy of the rules in with every fireworks purchase, you know, that say the dates and times that they're gonna be allowed to, everyone has them, probably have them post them in the tent also, saying, these are the days you're allowed to discharge and hours you're allowed to shoot them, I mean, I think that's a, a good idea as well, so.
So what about these, like the racetrack, what about them?
Well, they could, like they did, they came to us and said, hey, we're gonna do this outside the window, we can grant permission for those types of things.
Well, that was basically fountains, it wasn't boom-booms.
Yeah, but still, I mean, they, like I said, we talked to Dennis and gave them permission, so as long as we're aware of those things, yes, those would still be allowed.
Someone could do it.
I, I read too that Lee Summit has, uh, has a permit process, the permit's free, but it's not so much to hinder someone from shooting, but shooting fireworks, it's more for understanding who, who is asking to shoot fireworks in the event of something else catastrophic happening to neighbors, um, I don't know, I don't know if we want to look at anything like that, I think that might be a bit much, and I don't know how you control that anyway, if there's no, if, you know, no teeth in it or, or purpose other than knowing where they're gonna be shot at, but a bunch of kids aren't gonna go get a permit and, you know, do that.
Yeah. And I think something else to look at too is, like we mentioned, you know, dispatch has so many different sets of rules they're following, I don't wanna call fireworks, but I think we almost, I mean, on the days that we know could be potential days outside the window that people are gonna shoot them off, that maybe we need to go ahead and, you know, put somebody on the desk here to, to take calls, especially if we bring in, you know, extra officers to be able to, you know, enforce that, if they can dispatch those officers, whatever, instead of going through dispatch, kind of dispatch after handful with the photo calls, so. Yeah. I mean, TV say, is that something that one officer would be able to handle, if that was their primary job on those nights we brought them in, or would we need more than one? So I know, I, I know the Saturday before, listening to the radio, it was getting pretty, it was getting pretty.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty consistent when they, when they start shooting, so that, that one, it, it may take two officers, 'cause one officer would be, would be running, I mean, just all over the place, uh, and then they've been in different parts of the town, so we probably need two officers, one on each side of town to cover something like that.
And what do, I'm asking Mr. Fosser, whether he doesn't recall, there ever really happened to be somebody go through for fireworks before. I mean, typically, what are other, I mean, cities doing, are they confisc, do they confiscate the fireworks at that point, or do they give a warn, I mean, what, what would you say to, how'd that go?
My experience has been, normally they give a warn in the first couple of times, and then after that, then they'll start confiscating and issue a, a summons to them.
I think we should consider limiting the days that apply to this, I don't know how to work that in the calendar, if we can figure something out or model it after cities that have already gone down this road, that sort of thing.
So I know most of them, but, but most of them would just, just save days, I don't think they actually ever, I mean, have taken into consideration the weekends necessarily, but that's why I was kind of thinking, if you said the first Saturday, you still get a weekend in there. I mean, what's everyone's thought, I mean, three days, four days, I mean, what?
If you don't mind, could you remind me, what is the current ordinance, 'cause it seems like you two-
The current ordinance, if we don't change, I mean, is the third, fourth, fifth, but, I mean, the fifth, we didn't, I mean, I was, this year on the fifth, we didn't have a whole lot, I don't think the fifth has typically been a big day unless it is what falls on, on a Saturday, but I thought, I think the third and fourth are your biggest, and then, you know, everyone just like have a weekend in there as well.
I like the idea of the third and the fourth, and then a Saturday. Nice to see you.
So like the third, fourth, first Saturday? And then at, now, is it, do we make it a requirement of this ordinance or of the sale of fireworks ordinance to include that rule with the purchase?
I think we would, um, change the, the other ordinance, include an endet, to include, uh, the sale must include distribution of city materials or information, you know, we, we related to-
Have it posted or whatever.
Yeah, the city ordinance, that's it. I think that would be a separate action, but we can include that as part of-
Okay.
This amendment, we can bring two different sections forward.
Yeah, just bring two, yeah, bring two sessions forward. And in a budget time, we can discuss making sure that there's funds appropriated for that, and that would take care of that, and so we have this training to do the-
Yeah, they can answer the phone.
And that's something we can, that's something we can put on that material we're distributing to with the, the rules and times on. Now, as for actual discharge time, is everyone okay with the eleven o'clock timeframe staying, and just doing every day being nine A M. to eleven?
Sounds good. She shouldn't have said no.
How are we gonna let the residents know? How are we gonna let the residents know that there, there are gonna be penalties this year?
Well, it's something we would have to put out on these Facebook pages, we'd go with the, they'd be on the sheet that they would get when they purchase fireworks, uh, be posted in the tents, and then-
We'd probably, since there's a change to the ordinance, we'd probably include a story about it in the city view as well, uh, that goes out to all the residents, but yeah, social media, um, utility bill, that sort of thing.
(inaudible).
Yeah. Got the newspaper as well.
Well, it's gonna be actually three days of fireworks period, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, which is what the original ordinance is always, it's three days. We expanded this year for the hall, for the, how it fell.
But Saturday is the fourth, that takes two days right there.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be, well, the third or the fourth fall on Saturday, you'd have, it'd be two days, yeah.
Why not give him the fifth day on, as just in case on that happening? Because the kids are gonna be out there doing it, and I don't want to see the place to rest in the kids.
Well, they're not gonna be resting anybody, you know.
Okay.
Oh, I mean, but how, I mean, I mean, I don't, how do you, the-
That'll only happen once every so many years.
Yeah, I mean-
So that shouldn't, just go ahead and leave it where it's in there, but that way there will be three days at least.
I mean, you could word it to where you could add, I mean, you could add the second if the third or fourth fell on a Saturday or Sunday, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. All it seems fair. I have six kids, I know that they like to play.
I mean, we, we can, I mean, we, and we could put in case the-
Right.
-the third or fourth falling on a Saturday or Sunday, it would be allowed on the second.
Okay.
However it's worded, it's not going to be more than the three days.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, I, I, I mean, I mean, really, it, it's not so much about the discharge dates, it's really more about, we need to be able to, you know, if someone's shooting fireworks off at one A M., have more, you know, have an officer available to go say, hey, you guys need to, to stop it, I mean, it's really not so much the date, it's more of the enforcement, is what we really need to work, I mean.
But I just don't like loopholes, I just assume that it's-
Yeah.
Do you have that?
Yep. I have it, that's fair. I will.
You have anything else, Tom? Okay. Uh, next item under new business, new business then was residency requirements. This is something you had asked to be placed on the agenda, I think regarding residency requirement of certain, uh, city positions.
Yes, uh, I, I believe that, like, uh, we need to have it, if you're going to open up a position from all different areas, I think you need to have it where they can live near Green Valley, if it's just outside, but are able to get here within a decent amount of time for emergencies.
What is it currently? Is it police chief, city administrator, city clerk? Is that?
Yeah, those are the three.
And do we have?
High ordinance.
It's changed multiple times. Currently, we don't have anybody that's on response time, right? Cause we just do.
Correct.
But right now, we don't.
If I need you, Mr. Hunt, I expect you here now.
I usually am.
I know.
I can be. Okay, so, what are you, I mean, proposing? What would you like, I mean, you would like to see just, what kinda, you'd like to see a response time?
All the positions.
For all positions, or?
Well, I think.
Or, I mean, just, just for the, the ones currently that have?
Right.
Switch those to response time?
Yes.
How long is the response time, you think?
How long does it take you to get here, Ryan?
Well, you don't wanna go with me, cause I'm close. Uh, it takes me, it depends, if I stop by quick trip and go get the truck washed, about forty-five minutes.
Oh, well, you're not supposed to be truck washed.
I would say probably a twenty minute, twenty to thirty minute response time would be sufficient, uh.
That sounds fine. I mean, in case of emergencies, you're gonna have to be here, so, I mean, is that within line of what it was at one time?
Yeah, fifteen to twenty, I think, last time we had, it, I think.
Twenty minutes, I believe, and that, it, it, it's, it's really kinda subjective, um, but it gives us, it, it at least gives us a guideline.
Okay.
So, that would be, I, I think real.
Employee, or so?
Huh?
What are we talking about?
I think she's just talking to three that currently have resi- residency requirements, so, uh, police chief, city clerk, city administrator, I think is.
That's the three, yeah.
The three that you're.
That's what I was wanting to get it to line up.
So, those three.
Otherwise, you're losing some of the help we have, or can have.
I'm, I'm saying thirty minutes.
It's a pretty board.
It's, it's up to four, I mean, it's up.
Twenty to thirty is what I would recommend.
You okay with thirty?
I'm okay with thirty, but do we need to define what thirty minutes means? Does it mean thirty minutes to run their seat in their office, or does it mean thirty minutes to go to hit the?
City miles?
City limits?
Some cities have done, like mileage, like within a certain mile.
Yeah, mile, miles from the hall.
Yeah, that's probably a better idea. It's more tangible, it's easier to tie down, yeah, um.
Okay. So, it's a, I don't know how to judge on the mileage issue.
Well, you can go, um, you know, thirty miles, uh, west or east in thirty minutes, um, but as you head towards the city, or, you know, Northern Independence or something like that, uh, it, it, you know, cuts down drastically. So, I would say probably, again, Mayor, this is the board's discretion, but probably a twenty mile radius.
The twenty mile radius to the hall? Everyone okay with that, or?
What I could do is when I bring.
I just gotta make sure someone's gonna second it when it comes up.
Yeah, well, what I can do is whenever we bring the ordinance back to the board, it's gonna require two reads. Um, we could include a twenty mile radius snapshot, that which would show you how far we'd be able to reach out, and then the thirty mile radius.
Yeah, do that, like a circle.
Yeah, yeah, and that, that'll, uh, we can break it down into several different categories. You guys can actually select which section that you want that night for the first read, and then we'll change it formally for the second read.
I guess the question is, are we okay with bringing forward an ordinance, changing that, and then that night, we can look, more can look at the radius inside what, when they want the radius to be?
The only question, a short answer to your question is yes, but the only other question I would have is, does bringing this forward and acting on it create any hardship for any of the parties who are going to be affected by it? Is it gonna cause anybody to have to move, or is it gonna create any kind of issues for anyone?
Um, currently, you would all, yeah, the tree actually lives within Green Valley, um, I don't think she's gonna throw up a for sale sign because we, we change it, uh, and then.
Even further away.
Acting chief, uh, Beal is well within that response time, um, in Blue Springs, so, yeah, there would be no impact to staff.
And can you recommend, I need to clarify too, we don't really even need to include city administrator in the ordinance, because city administrator's a contract employee.
Correct.
And that can always be put in the city administrator contract.
My contract states my requirements, yes.
So, I mean, we don't really, your city administrator position doesn't even need to be in the ordinance, really. We can just acknowledge that your criteria is set by contract.
Okay.
Right, so really, then it's only the change, it's only city clerk and police chief.
Okay.
So, if future boards went to see the ministry, live in the city limits, and that's, they put that in the contract to the ministry, we live in the city limits.
Well, be sure and put that in when they're applying for any jobs, so it's just about the stuff.
Well, it'd be in the job description, they would wanna put in the contract.
Hey, we're not planning on hiring the city.
Yeah.
Has it really been an issue before?
You know, dispatch.
Because as long as I've been here, I don't recall it ever been an issue. That's changed it.
I don't think the, well, the last police chief we had was not within the, the city limits.
Cause at that time, it wasn't.
Correct.
It was, yeah, it was after, yeah.
Yeah, um, the city clerk, every time that we have hired, it's been a, it's, it's been a, uh, consideration for anybody that's, that's gone for that position. Fortunately, Teresa already lived within Green Valley, didn't have to relocate. That's my experience with it. I think residency requirements are antiquated in this day of, you know, commuting, and you're able to get from one point to another so quickly. Uh, really, anytime that you put a, a residency requirement that says you have to live within the corporate city limits, uh, that just kinda dwindles down the pool that you're able to select from. So, that's just my opinion, which is, uh, subjective, because obviously, I'm one of those employees that's affected by it. Uh, but it doesn't seem to, I don't think that performance has changed, whether you have somebody that lives within the city limits or not. In fact, I think an argument could be made that an employee that lives inside of the city limits could be more easily persuaded to, uh, use personal judgment than if they don't. So, um, just because any decision that they do make, uh, has a subjective personal side of it, instead of just the objective business side.
I didn't have anything else to add to that? All right. Move on then to presentations. Presentations of National League of Cities Service Line Program.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I will let, uh, Mr. Murphy introduce our presenter tonight. It's Lee Zell, uh, well, I just started to, but go ahead, Ken.
As we say, a, a few months back, uh, we actually received a letter, and it was from M L, and it was, uh, sent out to member cities. Let them know that they were, uh, basically backing a service line, uh, warranty group company, uh, National League of Cities. And when we got that, we reached out to the contact that was listed on that, and that was Mr. Lee Zell, who is here tonight to talk to you about this, uh, program. That's been gaining a lot of traction in the state. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you very much for inviting me this evening to come and answer some of the questions that, as Mr. Murphy mentioned, back in February, I, I got the email, and he, as he mentioned, uh, the Missouri Municipal League reviewed the National League of Cities Service Line Program that we share with cities across the nation. And, um, Mr. Murphy asked if I could, uh, come before the alderman and share the details of the program. The State Municipal League had reviewed the program and did the same kind of vetting that National League of Cities had done over the last fifteen years. And, um, your state league had asked, said that they would like to endorse the program and make an effort to have more cities within the state league participate in the program. So, um, the reason I'm here this evening is between then and now, uh, there's been almost seventy cities in your state that have asked me to come and visit. Um, and time flies when you don't cover only Missouri. Um, I cover recently from Kansas to New Jersey to the tip of Florida, so it's hard to keep up. But, um, sort of an overview on some of your neighbors, cause I know sometimes it is helpful to know your neighbors, who's participating and, and so forth. So, some of the larger cities that have done this for, actually quite a while, Kansas City actually had this program for now over five years. They've had extremely high success of it, um, in their city, they now have had more than seventy thousand households participate in the program. Um, Independence, you know, the larger cities nearby, they joined this past year. Um, Grandview also, Odessa, Hurley, Kimberly, Kimberlin City, Lawson, Jose Beach, Pleasant Hills, Sunset Hills, Moverly, Pine Lawn, Nella Villa, Wellington, County Country, Adrian, Lamont, Winchester, Centertown, Queensville, uh, Jonesburg, Lake Tappawindoe, Moscow Mills, as well as still Diggins, Lexington, and Calhoun are just the ones that have been able to, uh, help get set up during this first part of this year. Um, so it seems that the program is attracting the right kind of attention. The experience that we have across the nation with this program is what seems to be interesting to the cities that are participating. So, what I'll let you know is, first of all, and this is what's important, is the National League of Cities, this program is set up so that it is no cost to your city. It uses no city tax dollars whatsoever. It is a voluntary program, which your city basically just asked us to make available to your residents. And that's what we actually come to you and ask for, is, you know, basically you pass a resolution, um, which I've sent one to Ken, so I know he has it. But a simple version, I'll explain in a moment. And what you're doing when you make that motion, uh, for that resolution is just saying, we would like to communicate this program, which the National League of Cities Service Line Program is all, and we handle everything. So, there is no additional workload to your staff. Um, we do ask for your partnership, because we want to be responsible to your city. And that is, we want you to have the right to say, you're doing great. We also want you to absolutely have the right to have a meeting like this and say, be sure we'd like you to come back and visit with us, cause we have a question, whatever that question may be. And until that question, you know, we get it answered, we'd like the program to hold for a moment. That's how we want you to have oversight in the program. And the cities that we work with across the state and across the nation, um, that's our relationship, because it's how we make a commitment to you, that the National League of Cities has had that same commitment for the last ninety plus years on every single program, polit- policy program that we've ever presented to any city in the nation. And we set a standard that we always fulfill to, because our bar is set above the standard that we commit to you. And for ninety years, we've had every program that we do in every city involving every resident, we have that as our standard. So, that not only, not just once do we have an issue where we don't deliver to exactly what we commit to. So, so what does this program do? Well, first of all, let me explain to you why this program exists. Um, for the last fifteen plus years, um, water quality and water conservation has been a great deal of, of conversation across the nation. A lot of different aspects have drawn the attention of cities. And in the last five years, um, there was a report that came out in twenty thirteen that said, the water and sewer infrastructure in our nation, not just in any city, but in the entire nation, was rated a B plus by the American Society of Civil Engineers. So, they were trying to raise our attention going, hey, this is not a small problem, this is an every city problem. And one of the reasons that this triggered our attention is, we already have this program. And so, we went out to cities and we asked them, so, how are you de- dealing with aging infrastructure within your city? Every city that we spoke to, their description, and this is just how everyone looked at it, their descriptions often started with, we're handling all the aging infrastructure within our right of way. And so, when we, as the National League of Cities, happen to look at this issue, we didn't, we didn't look in the right of way, we looked in your city footprint. And we shared that with the cities, and we said, well, let me explain to you what we happened to notice, because we thought of it differently, not just the right of way, but within your footprint of your city. Here's what's going on. Allow me this comparison. If your city's arteries, arteries are the right of way, that's the hard, that's, all the blood flows through those arteries. Let me tell you where the capillaries are, like every household in your city. You're only taking care of the arteries, but all the problems start and are fed through those arteries that go out to each individual house, and then are fed back through the sewer lines from those homes into your system. So, as cities described to me, how they were very carefully clearing, and I saw bruiser, bruiser, but clearing out the mains for sewer lines to keep flow up, minimize overflow events, uh, try and minimize how many times the EPA came to visit, because you had overflow events that went into a river, caused a sewage is- issue here or there. Um, we tried to explain to them, when we don't pay attention to the, what's connecting into your sewer mains, what happens is, the homes that are in your, your city look beautiful, their roofs are beautiful, the paint on the house is gorgeous, the grass is gorgeous. But what no one is looking at is that seventy-four year old house, or thirty-six year old house, or twenty-four year old house. What's underneath the ground is what's decaying and falling to pieces. And as the sewer lines literally start racing and collapsing, um, they, they start washing all this debris of broken lines into your sewer mains. So, you're in there clearing out yours, but I'm replenishing it, replenishing it daily from this, this flush of all the, the water and sewers that's coming back into your system from the laterals. So, on a short, concise version of this discussion is, so cities say, well, how is this impacting us? And we did the research for you. If you receive a hundred calls in a month, some cities, it's a week, but a hundred calls in a month related to water. The water calls are something like this. There's water in the front yard, I don't know where it's coming from, it's in the streets too. Can you come and check on it? A hundred times out of a hundred, a city will send staff, they're not going to ignore that call. When you get there, your staff, within a few minutes, is gonna determine, is this in the streets, is it in the right of way, is it in a private property? Ninety-three out of one hundred calls that you're going to go out to, that you paid, sent your staff and equipment to, ninety-three of them are not going to be your problem. They're gonna be on the private side. They're gonna be in the private property of your residence. So, a lot of those residents are gonna hear the staff say, this is not something we can help you with, Miss Davis, you're gonna have to reach out to a contractor on your own. If you haven't experienced, the next thing I'm gonna mention, you're, you're in a very unfortunate place, because most of those residents next say, I'm, they tell us, they say, I'm about to call someone I voted for. So, they call this alderman and say, I was your third grade teacher. There's gotta be, you gotta make an exception. Isn't there something that we can do? So, short term discussion on this is, we end up in the same place that your staff on the curb did, but now it's uncomfortable for the elected officials, because you really have to explain, there is not a way for us to take public tax dollars to go onto private properties to resolve this issue. So, cities ask us, they said, what can we do to help us get ahead of this issue? So, the National League of Cities, the Service Line Program is specifically designed so that what happens is, this program is educational. that what happens is, this program is educational first, okay? It's not costing you or your residents anything for it to exist. So, what it does is, we communicate strictly through a letter that we send out to your residents from the city saying, "This is our current public policy." Our current public policy is, if you have an issue, and it's water-related, water or sewer, and it's outside of the right-of-way that we take care of, then we need you to know now that that will be an issue you will need to handle yourself. However, we also know from past experience that many of the times, when you have a problem like this, and you make the call to your local contractor, and you have no idea what to expect, you're going to find out that the cost for this repair is going to be thousands of dollars, and you're not going to be ready for that, that answer. So, because the city would like to give you an option that is completely voluntary, we're making a program from the National League of Cities available to any and all residents, but with no requirement for any resident to use it. And what that program does is, it allows the residents to say, "I need help. And I can't afford something that's going to be thousands of dollars, much less hundreds. So, what can I do?" When they call the, the National League of Cities Service Line Program, they'll say, "I'd like to use this, I've got a green spot in the front yard, I'm pretty sure it's unusually green, so I'm thinking there's a problem percolating over there, what can I do?" They can sign up for the program. The water line program for water itself is five dollars and seventy-five cents for each month if they decide they need help with something. So, they use it for as short as a month, or as long as they wish, thirty years, whatever they wish. They can cancel at any time. So, they can sign up and say, "I want to use it, I'm going to pay five seventy-five, and a month from now, I can just say, 'I'm done.'" The sewer line portion of the program is seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Again, if you use it when they want to, they discontinue it when they want to, it's a month-a-month. And then also, inside the home, we actually, in the structure, if you'll imagine, inside the structure of your house, there is water and sewer both combined, and that is nine dollars and ninety-nine cents each month if they want to use it. The way the program is set up, so that they pick what they need help with. They say, "I need all of these things, but I just need help with that sewer line." The program is set up so that they pick and choose on their own, they can use it six, seven months, they can actually, and this is real, they, they can actually wait, they'll have a problem occur, they'll call us, and that's what happens, by the way, if they don't call the city, now they're able to call and go, "I need help." Within a maximum of one hour, that's the maximum the allowance for the program is, within the first one hour, a local licensed business contractor in your city will be the one that comes. So, this program returns the business back to your businesses. We don't take it away because we're not trying to be any, that, we're just directing it. And now, when that contractor arrives though, and they say, "Miss Williams, I'm here, I'm here to fix the sewer line break that you have," she's going to say, "Do I have to pay anything? No. You already paid your five seventy-five or your seven seventy-five, you have no other costs." So, the resident now is dealing in a, a cost that they can handle. This is not a loan, by the way, it's basically, by your state, it's considered a warranty. But what it does is, it allows the residents to have the line replaced, repaired, and then when they're done, there's nothing more for the resident to do. Usually, you'll have six to eight percent of those, those residents that do sign up, then a couple weeks after they have a major failure enough repair, they'll call and say, "Hey, I think I should cancel, it's all brand-new now." You can do that. "Oh, wow, okay, that's, that's great." And that's how they do the program. People will call back after a while, usually, and say, "I only meant the water line, because I still want to keep the sewer and the so-and-so, because those haven't failed yet, so they're going to use that over and over again." In-home plumbing covers things like tenants that get tenant balls and rubber duckies and things down the toilet that they shouldn't, but we cover that. There's, these are all programs that have no limits on how many claims they can use. So, you can call a hundred times a year, you'll get a hundred visits from the plumber. The cost is strictly the five seventy-five, the seven seventy-five, or the nine ninety-nine, they're all for you if that's what you wish. So, basically, you're using your local plumbers, you're, you're confining the cost to the limited amounts of, of the program, and for the limited time that your residents want to use the program. Any questions at this point?
Is that some of the work, the outside lines that the public works with?
So, we stop, well, I'll let him answer.
So, basically, you know, like on the water side, just think of the meter. This would cover everything from the backside of the meter to the house. We cover up to the meter. Basically, except the right-of-way, sorry, infrastructure's in the, the right-of-way. Same with sewer, we have the sewer mains, and then you have the lines coming from the house that connect it with the.
And, by the way, just to support what he's saying, we literally ask each city, "Where do you want us to start, meaning where do you start?" Because we don't want to create any loose bubbles or loophole kind of things. So, if you told us, "We start at the street," at the water main, you would, we would say, "Okay, then we're going to cover from the main to the house." That's why, by the way, this program typically covers from the water meter to the house, because the cities often say, "No, no, we want to cover from the meter backwards." But on the sewer main, we actually cover all the way to the tap on the sewer mains. That does mean that we specifically do cover repair, excavation and repair with, with permitting from the city and inspections by the city, as any other contractor would. When we, you know, tear off a road and repair the road when we're finished, that's all covered, that's all part of the program. So, now your resident doesn't have to go, "I don't know who to call." Well, they don't have to, they call the program, we're sending out your, your local businesses, just like you would in a restaurant. You're number one, you're the next, you're going to get the second call, you're going to get the third. That way, they all get rotated through. We ask each of your, your contractors they want to participate, which is, we hope all of them, but if some aren't interested, that's okay. We let them know that we were, are going to be, needing them to be bonded, that we guarantee their work. Even if they go out of business in the middle of a job, we will hire and pay for another contractor to finish that job without delay, so that never happens on your, your residents. The other thing that we, this is part of the thought process that the National League of Cities has worked on over the fifteen years. So, a lot of times currently, residents would have a contractor say, "Okay, the city said I have to call somebody, I called you, they show up and they say it's forty-five hundred dollars, but I need twenty-two fifty to get started." And so, they're like, "Wow, that's a lot of money." But if they come up with it, there are two contractors, they're going to take that money, go to the supply house, pay off the last job that they did, and walk away saying, "I'm, I'm done." And it leaves your resident in a tough spot. This program completely isolates your, your resident and protects them from any possibility of that. There is no lien or liability possible on your resident, because we take all ownership of all the costs. So, they have no out-of-pocket otherwise than just that five, seven, ten-dollar kind of thing. And that eliminates any fraud that can occur on, on other issues that come up. So, any other questions?
I'm a, I'm making an assumption here, but I'm assuming any damage that, let's say your sewer line backed up, you cover the sewer, damage to the house, it does not fall on you, it falls on your homeowners or something like that, or what is that?
That's a great question, so I'm going to repeat it just to make sure I got it correct. So, a lot of people currently have renters or homeowners insurance, and they may say, "Oh, I think my homeowners might do something like this, or would do some part of this, what would it do?" Homeowners insurance typically says, "If you have your house flood, or the sewer, sewer line backs up into your house," they go, "We're going to send out surf pro, they're going to clean up the mess, dry the floor, put in a new flooring, carpet, whatever, put in a new sheet rock because it messed up the walls, paint the whole room, but we're not fixing the pipes." Because that's where they go, "That's not what we did." So, this program is specifically saying, "We're going to take all the pipes, and we're going to do what they don't do." So, that's how that helps with that question. So, that is, that's, that's actually a real thing that does come up. But yeah, we actually cover that, and that's why, that's actually why we have the in-home plumbing portion of this. We started out with water and sewer only, and over the years, residents started asking this, they say, "There's a gap, and you might not realize," and so they explained to us, "The in-home, the water and the sewer in your home." And so, we said, "Okay, we should add that." And we combine the two, but inside, and that way, if they have a problem, it doesn't matter what part of it is, water or sewer, we're covering it either way. And that was inside, so that's why that comes up. So, back to the general concept, and I am still open for questions, is, so basically, the cities that want to make the program available, that's all that you, we ask that you do. We make this program available, we communicate the program through the letter. The letter is sent out from this, from the city, we do all of the printing and so forth, we put the letter back in front of your manager or assistant city manager, whoever you tell us to. But when we send out a letter, it's going to say, "The said city wants you to be aware our public policy is, and therefore, if this occurs outside of that, then you would be looking at this." So, if not a single resident in your entire city uses the program, we will continue to do this at least for three years, three times a year, we send out just a letter, that's all we do. The reason is, is we're not trying to worry about how many people sign up. So, I have some cities that have two or three people for two or three years, and then all of a sudden, they'll have a few hundred all of a sudden, because it starts to catch on because of word of mouth. But the key there, there is to let people know about it. Then, as they continue to grow over time, you'll see more and more people participate. To give you feedback on the real numbers nationally, on who's going to participate, and what percentage.
The first year the program is made and just communicated.
Volunteer, remember, there's no requirement, anyone does anything other than throw it in the trash, but some of them are going to go, "I think I want that." The first year, you should expect ten percent of the total number of households in your city to use the program, to sign up. The second year, another ten, the third year, another ten. About thirteen percent over three years. After that, you'll see exactly a great example of Kansas City. And what's happening is, the first year, what happens is, and this, for the audience, they may not see it this, or recognize what I'm describing, but the city you should. In every single city I visit, if I point over here and I say, "This ten percent of your city over there," that's where you spend eighty-five percent of your water and sewer infrastructure budget over there. And you might correct me and say, "No, it's down there, wherever that is." And I go, "But you know what I'm saying." And this is an evidence thing that cities see, they go, "Yeah, it's all, seems to be over there, it's a lower area, maybe it's an older section, whatever it is." And how many years have you been spending that huge percentage of your budget over there? A year, five years, ten years, twenty years even? So, what this program does in the first year voluntarily, is during the first year, eighty-five percent of the people that sign up are going to be over there. But I won't know if that's where they are, they're just going to sign up. And the reason is, is they've been trying to figure out how to fix this problem themselves, they're in the poor area, or, you know, a low area, just a desperate situation, and they're going, "We dig a hole, we go to Lowe's, we go to the hardware store, we try and fix this thing, we end up band-aging it ourselves. We never really get it done right." So, three, four months go by and you have to do it again and again and again. So, what happens is, when this program comes out, it's literally five seventy-five, seven seventy-five, they're going, "Are you kidding? I'll take that, I'll do that, let's hire, let's do this and let the professional guy come." Sure enough, it breaks, they call the pro-teams, he fixes it, we guarantee what he does for another year. So, they're like, "Okay, now I have the real solution." And that, that first year is where the second, our ten percent comes from. Because the neighbors go, "Okay, you had the program, did it work?" "Yes." "Did they release some, somebody else?" "Yeah, this is the good guy out." "Okay, did they pay for everything?" "Yeah, I paid nothing but the, the amount that was already sitting there, I knew I was going to pay." "Okay, I'll try that too." As you work the neighborhoods, this is a reality, neighborhoods fail at almost the same time. So, as the neighborhood gets to a certain point, you'll see one neighbor, a few months later, another, another, so it's sort of work is set timing, and so all of a sudden, the neighbor starts hitting. This program being available means that the neighbors start going, "There's four or five people in the neighborhood having problems, I think I'm going to go ahead and sign up this year." Because apparently, we're at that point where things start not working, and I just don't want to pay seventy-five hundred dollars like my neighbor did. And so, that's sort of how it works, so. But at this point, all we're looking for is basically a motion from your alderman that would be, we would make a motion that the city in your interim agreement to communicate the National League of Cities Service Line Program at no cost to the city, using no city tax dollars as a voluntary program available to all residents, but with no requirement for any resident to participate in the program. And then, all the people say, "Huh." So, any of you can make that motion, and that's, that's why we came to answer questions, and then you can give your information on the program.
So, Mr. Mayor, I know probably half the board right now is wondering why I invited this guy in for a sales pitch. We, you know, we've seen the National League of Cities operate this program for, I personally have, for the last ten years. I've always thought it was bizarre that they asked cities to endorse it, but the longer that I've been a part of municipal government, the more that I've seen that people get, they're, you know, they're, they have run-ins or issues with contractors, this is one of the most confusing parts of our infrastructure, is, you know, well, you're responsible from the meter to the house, or from the tap on the sewer to the house. So, the longer this has gone on, kind of the more attention that we've paid to it. I, I would suggest that the board at least take this information and review it, and rather than, I'm not at least probably going to throw something at me, but rather than a motion from the board, I would, I would rather you take it, if you're comfortable with it, review this information, do your own research on the program, and then at the next Board of Alderman meeting, we could ask for that, that motion. I'm sure once you guys, once the boards have the opportunity to review, they're going to feel more comfortable about this. Really, when it got our attention, canonized, is when the MML endorsed it. MML has not endorsed programs, they're the, you know, they're, they're the representative of the cities to the state legislature, and, you know, they help us solve all sorts of problems, they come up with unique solutions. And so, when they, they endorsed this program, that's when we decided that I was going to, we were going to recommend Lee come and visit with you guys. So, just in the interest of moving on with the business, is there any other questions for Lee? Okay. Lee, appreciate you coming tonight. Your contact information in here, if any of them have questions, I'll make sure that they get in touch with you, and this will be back on the, the next board meeting, so.
Uh-huh, thank you. Anything at all you want to be? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next slide is a public hearing, a public hearing for zone change requests, downtown Overly District, M1 Light Industrial.
Mayor and Board, the property that we're looking at here is approximately twelve acres in size, there's a map attached to the, to the ordinance, but basically, the area we're looking at is, if you go south of Wagner-Tarsney here, is the area behind O'Reilly and the KT's on the south side of Old Forty. So, basically, that empty land from the back of KT's over to the mini storage, and then down. One of the things with this site, I mean, obviously, you guys are aware, it's been vacant for quite some time. When the Overly District was created, that was all one big parcel, the KT's, O'Reilly, the vacant land was there. KT's and O'Reilly came in and took part of that land, and what's left, a large part of it is floodway and flood plain on the southern portion. They just kind of left this little piece that doesn't have any Main Street frontage, it just runs on, on Old Forty. So, commercial appeal-wise, there really hasn't been any. I know, staff-wise, we haven't, we hadn't been contacted by anybody, commercial-wise, I wasn't looking to develop that. And we did have, the last few months, meetings- Um, and we did have, uh, the last few months, uh, BES LLC, which, uh, Mr. Jim Kitz, who is, is here in the audience, is one of the partners with that, uh, came to us with a potential tenant. Uh, and the use that they'd be looking for, uh, would fit under the M1 Light Industrial, if not, uh, not under the commercial overlay district zoning that's currently there. Uh, and you can see on the attached, uh, drawing in there, kind of where they'd be looking at putting the building, um, and the fence that would be there, and access would be off of Old Forty. Uh, but basically, it would be a, kind of a utility contractor, and you see a lot of them. Um, that's the, the use that's, that they anticipate being there now. Uh, so they will need some, uh, storage in the, in the building. Uh, but it's just something that wouldn't fit in, uh, that commercial zoning, uh, which is currently there. Uh, so from the staff point of view, uh, we have to look at what the land kind of tells us sometimes what the best use is. Uh, with that, and with the large portion of it being floodplain and floodway, basically unbuiltable, uh, this seems like a, you know, valid request, uh, from the applicant. So, uh, the staff's recommendation that the, uh, they go forward with this, okay, M1 Light Industrial. Uh, and we did have, at the June P&amp;D meeting, had a public hearing there, and did not have anyone coming to speak against it. Uh, so it was approved, or rec- recommended approval by P&amp;D to bring it to the board.
What was the property?
Uh, made it, owned by the BES LLC, uh, Mr. Kissick is one of those owners. Here's the representative applicant.
The, the zoning on the property immediately to the south, drawn, what appears to be on the south side of the creek? Do we know what that is?
Yes. Uh, and I can actually pass out, that's my fault, I should've done it before. Still be kind of small, you can see what the current zoning is. The land directly to the east, which is the mini storage, is already in one. Uh, and really, the land to the south, you can see the red line in here, is a city limit line, which is not really a whole lot there. Um, and actually goes into unincorporated jack components. For right now, the, the entire part of the city is the, um, downtown overlay district transition zone. So it, it shows that it's the green on there, right now. It's kind of hard to get your bearings there, but if you find that yellow, um, odd shaped piece, just the southwest corner there, where Eagles Parkway and Main Street would be, it's directly to it right there, that, that green.
Any on the board have any additional questions? As it is a public hearing, we will, uh, open it up for, uh, comments either for or against the zoning request. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the board regarding the request? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. All guys know, just no questions, can you move on to ordinance, please? All right, we'll move on to ordinances.
Honorable, this is Bill, number V eighteen eleven. It is first reading of an ordinance changing the zoning for certain land in Green Valley from downtown overlay district transition zone to M1 Light Industrial. This is ordinance, first reading ordinance, V eighteen dash eleven.
Mayor, I move to.
Mayor, I move, we accept bill eighteen dash eleven for its first read, bring it back by, or for a second read, by Ty Long.
Malvin Haley, accept bill V eighteen dash eleven for its first reading, bring it back by Ty Long for its second reading. Do you have a second?
Yes.
Take Malvin West. Need discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, as Mr. Murphy just explained in the public hearing, this is a ordinance that will be changing downtown overlay district zoning, uh, in the transition zone to M1 Light Industrial. If you have any additional questions, uh, Mr. Murphy can answer them.
Any questions or discussions?
One point of discussion, can you, just for the audience, can you bring up, just, uh, point of discussion, we have the P&amp;D meeting relative to the floodway, where the building's gonna be, just to share the concerns that the P&amp;D.
Yeah, so, uh, at the public hearing at P&amp;D, the commissioners basically just wanted to make sure that they were approving something that was going to allow building in a floodway, um, to cause problems for the city or for, um, the future owner or the person on the property. Uh, I mean, we went through your explanation, as a city, we can't allow, we can't give a building permit for something that's in the floodway, that ends up coming back on us and goes against our part of the flood insurance, uh, program through FEMA. Um, so what they've shown on here, when you look at the, the drawing, it's kind of a little dotted line. And basically, that's what they're proposing, is where the fence would be, so that would be the extent of their yard. In the floodplain, you can build, um, it just, um, short version of it, basically, you just have to be above a certain point, above the floodplain. Uh, but in this particular case, they're not really even looking at building in that area. So approving the zoning is not going, it doesn't change the builtable area. It's still, it'd still be tied to the same, uh, requirements, no matter if it's commercial or industrial.
Any additional? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye. All opposed, same sign.
Five zero, first reading, Mayor. Next item is Resolution R eighteen dash thirty-five, which is a resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Grand Valley, authorizing installation, six new streetlights in Rosewood Hills, eight flat subdivision. Resolution R eighteen dash thirty-five.
I move that we accept resolution number R eighteen thirty-five, uh, as read.
I have a motion, Malvin, to approve resolution R eighteen dash thirty-five, do you have a second?
Second.
Take it on, Mr. President. Need discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, as the state, this is six streetlights for Rosewood, the eighth flat. Um, they're just required because of, uh, new subdivision. Uh, Mr. Arroyo can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
All those in fairness, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Five zero, Mayor. Resolution R eighteen dash thirty-six. Resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Grand Valley, authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Springstead Incorporated for Municipal Advisory Services. Resolution R eighteen dash thirty-six.
Mayor, I move that we accept resolution R eighteen dash thirty-six as read.
I have a motion, Malvin West, to approve resolution R eighteen dash thirty-six. Do you have a second?
Second.
Take it on, Mr. Bowman. Need discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, uh, Springstead is, uh, the group that we've had, uh, for our financial advising since two thousand and seven. They've done our bond, uh, helped us with our bond issuances, all of the, uh, the TIF areas that we have, in addition to other studies and analysis. Um, there's a tremendous amount of, uh, institutional knowledge with Springstead and history between the city, uh, and, and the group. We have not had a, an agreement in place, uh, that, that blocks down fees, um, for quite some time now, and that's something, that's something we've been working towards over the last, uh, two years now. So, uh, what you have before you is the, the final, uh, well, this is the, the version of the agreement between the city and Springstead. It will be in effect, um, for one year with the, uh, rates being issued, uh, or the, the rates being, uh, uh, stable for one year, at which time we can, uh, as we move forward, the, um, the fees, I'm sorry, I'm tongue-tied this evening. The, the fees are, uh, based off each issuance and listed up above. Um, Mr. Ben Hart from Springstead is here tonight, if you have any questions, uh, and I'd be happy to answer any of the board may have.
Do you have any questions or discussions? All right. Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Five zero, Mayor.
Next up, city attorney's report.
Nothing to report, Honorable, thank you.
Next up, city administrator's staff report.
Mr. Mayor, we will start with, um, uh, Chief Beal.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go.
I got a couple of things I wanted to bring to you guys' attention. I know last council meeting, we was here and the mayor gave, uh, acting captain Hedger a proclamation for Jack's retiring. Well, uh, a couple of days after that, uh, acting captain Hedger came to me, and he no longer wants to hold the K nine position. Um, told him, take a couple of days to think about it, uh, he say he'd already thought about it. Uh, told him he was getting up in age, uh, and he wanted to allow one of the younger guys the opportunity to take on that task. Uh, he, however, he do still wanna oversee the K nine, uh, unit. Uh, so, I, I allowed him to notify the department in his own words. Uh, so he put out a memo to the officers, uh, and we immediately set up a process to replace him. Uh, so, this moving on, um, it's kind of sad, he's been doing it twenty-five years. Uh, so, that, on that note, uh, we wish him the best. I know he'll, he'll make the right selection for replacement and think we'll be, we'll be in good hands. Uh, the second thing I have is, I sit back and I try to think of ways that, um, the police officers can be more transparent to the community and, uh, have a better interaction with them. So, uh, again, I, 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 uh, adopt a lot of things that Wentzville Police Department does, and they, they had a program that really stood out to me, and I wanted to implement it here. And so, I'm just advising you guys that I wanna implement, and I'm going to implement a, a program. It's called Request a Cop. Uh, the way it works, or the purpose of this program, is to promote a healthy, interactive relationship between the Grand Valley Police Department, the citizens, and business members of Grand Valley. The goal I wish to accomplish by doing so is just to promote opportunities where law enforcement officers of the Grand Valley Police Department can come together with members of the community and the social environment. And the way the program will operate is, uh, the police department will arrange for a uniform officer to be, visit a neighborhood event, a get-together, meeting, block party, kids' party, or school party, to mingle and interma- interact with the people that's in, uh, attendance. In some cases, the officers may be able to arrange for a specific piece of specialized equipment or a demonstration by our, our new K nine officer, whoever that may be, uh, to attend the event. Uh, I think, it's ironic that I did this because I told Christine Thompson, our administrative clerk, about this program. Uh, and so she sent me an email, or it was actually a clipping from the newspaper, and it was about two officers in Wisconsin. They sat down, they was in, eating lunch, and it was a, a, a young teenager who had autism, and she kept looking and pointing at them. And so them officers came over to sit down at the table with the family, and ate lunch with this young lady, and talked with her, and gave her attention. And the parents wrote on, on social media that that was the best experience, or one of the best experiences that she had in her life, and just appreciated, appreciated the officer spending that time with her, it made a difference in her life. And that's what I wanna be able to do with some of these young, young people here in Grand Valley. And, and, and again, to, uh, have a better relationship with some of the adult people that we have here, so. Uh, so, I'm gonna go ahead and implement this program and try to promote it best I can, and, uh, also, once I get it up and going, uh, they'll be able to, uh, request a form online, or either call in and request an officer. There's a specific officer, or we either will designate an officer to attend that, uh, function, whatever it may be. There are some qualifying, uh, factors or that, that we have, the, the, the event can't contain alcoholic beverages or things like that, so I just want you to know that this program will be up and running for, for the community and to promote a better interaction. Uh, the second thing I wanted to do is, um, once I got in, I, 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 I had to start spreading the task around, uh, of, uh, the officers. Some officers had a lot of tasks that they were dealing with, and I, I felt like I had to spread this out amongst these guys. And so what I, what I did is, officer, Sergeant Scranton right now is overseeing the VIPS program, and we talked about some things in detail that I wanted to happen with the VIPS. So I'm gonna let Sergeant Scranton explain what he's gonna do.
He's fighting on here.
Oh, what's that?
Port crowd. All right, I'm Sergeant Scranton with the Grand Valley Police Department. Um, I've been fortunate enough to be given the opportunity to be liaison for our new VIPS program. Not our new VIPS program, but we've got a turnaround in our VIPS program that we're working on. Uh, for those of you who don't know, the VIPS are volunteer organizations that are willing to assist law enforcement in certain police activities. I'm sure everybody here, you guys are probably familiar with it, they save us a ton of money in overtime. Uh, really, I saw that, saving a lot of money on, on overtime by helping, helping the law enforcement agencies out. Um, VIPS are a volunteer organization, uh, everything they do is free, we don't fund them anything, not a dime. We're hoping we can change that, but, uh, we, we have absolutely nothing that, that we give them, and they, they in turn give us a lot, a lot back for the citizen. What me and the chief have come up with, we'd like to, and along with the VIPS, um, we'd like to present some new programs that will allow us police officers to be back on the road more than what we actually are. There's a lot of things the VIPS are capable of handling that would actually free up officers, basically, to better serve the taxpayers, especially when it comes to, um, higher priority crimes. I think our main program for the VIPS that we're looking at starting, or that, uh, is an observation-only program used to provide an effective method of discouraging and minimizing neighborhood crimes. Volunteer patrol units, which would be, however the VIPS deem it, uh, volunteer patrol units can look for suspicious individuals, suspicious activities, and radio officers about the incidents that are occurring. Um, right now, we haven't established that. We've actually, uh, come up with, uh, a car magnet that we'd like to have to be able to identify the vehicles the VIPS are in. Uh, on the weekends, special events, we'd like to put them in an actual car, uh, possibly a conference car, and have them out as a set of, extra set of eyes and ears for law enforcement. Um, we as police officers, I know you guys know, we've, we're getting busier, and we're getting busier, and our time is, our time is, we're getting tied up on a lot more and more calls. And I have said we're missing stuff because there's not enough of us, and we can't be everywhere at once. Um, some of the other things that we're looking at doing that we're already doing with the VIPS, one of the other things is a special event, right now, they do Trail or Treat, they do Rachel's Run, they do Fair, uh, the Grand Valley Fair and Parade, we have a Xmas in the park, and a Santa bus escort. The VIPS are already doing traffic control. We'd also like to start a new program for the vacation residence check. And what that'd be, allow citizens, if they are going on vacation, they fill out a residence form, and they would like someone in law enforcement to check the residence. Great in theory, doesn't always happen. I mean, sometimes we come in and we don't, we run call to call to call, and just we'll have the manpower to do it. However, the VIPS are volunteering to check your residence, check your residence, make sure your doors are locked, that your water isn't squirting out of the front door, and we can call another guy if that happens. Check your residence, make sure everything, and they're willing to do that, to physically check your addresses, you know, the resi- physically check your address and, and make sure everything's okay, and, uh, help law enforcement out by doing that. Um, we're also looking at some station administration duties, we do some of that now, we'd like to pick that up a little bit. And we'd also like to implement a new program to where we have a long-term crime scene emerg- that's a long word, crime scene, emergency scene assistance. So a lot of times when we're on the crime scene here, a while back, we had a standoff with an individual with firearms that did not want to come out of the house, uh, so, several hours on the scene. We need resources, we need to relieve people. We need resources, we need to relieve people, we need equipment brought to the scene. They wouldn't actively be engaged in the scene because they are civilians, but they could definitely help us with a lot of stuff. A lot of times in those situations, we don't have people that we can leave and say, hey, go get floodlights, or go get this. We don't have anyone there, because once you do that, you, you know, you give up your furniture. We'd also like the VIPS to, we're going to implement business checks for the local businesses. In patrol vehicle, they would pull up, physically check doors, check for any kind of suspicious activity around your business, and basically report. If they see something weird, they're the eyes and ears, basically. If they see them weird or strange, or if they run into somebody, they're, you know, they have a protocol, they get back in their vehicle and they leave. Get back in their vehicle, leave, they're ready, the police will show up and, and will handle the situation. I'm not sure where we're at on the community outreach program, but everybody I've talked to in the VIPS is willing to help out with anything we want to do with that. As far as, we have, with our program with the VIPS, a huge set of skilled people. We're just cops, that's all we got, all of us. They have a skill set like you wouldn't believe. You have welders, you have people that can run boats, you have, I mean, just, their skill set is phenomenal, the things they can do. Basically, this, I'd like to talk, present up, Arthur Benjamin. And what I'd like to do is, is I'd like to present also with our, with our details to the caller, and we are going to hopefully implement this as, as soon as the chief allows us to get on the road and get going and, and get the VIPS in full swing.
Anybody have any questions?
I'll be going to help him with what goes on behind the curtain. Yeah, I know it.
You can do it. Alright, thank you guys.
I, I just want to, thanks, Willie. I, I just want to go ahead and add to that, VIPS is a national program, I've been doing VIPS program for years, and I, I'll tell you how effective it is. It first caught my attention when I was kind of forced into the position, and I didn't know what it was all about, but I went to the training, and it was a major from the Denver Colorado Police Department, and their VIPS ran their air support program, their helicopter program. I mean, that's how much these people are entrusted with in a law enforcement organization. So it is tried, trusted, and it do, it does work. And, and I just want to make them transfer it to the community, and they actually do relieve the law enforcement officers. If you look at the amount of hours that they put in, which they keep track of, they work a lot of hours, and they have helped us in, in reduce our workload. So I, I want you guys to accept that, and, and we'll get out there and we'll, they'll be visible, and there'll be eyes and ears for us. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? I know there's one individual who has been funding the VIPS program within the VIPS, like as far as their shirts and any sort of items that they have to purchase, is there a way in the future to get them some sort of a budget so that they are not having to fund things themselves? Or fundraise, or, you know, something along those lines?
And we...
Just for future use.
Yeah, yeah. You're stealing my thunder, so.
Well, one, one of the things we had to do when we first got started was make it a nonprofit organization. So the, the other thing that we thought about doing is, is doing fundraisers to, to raise money. In the past, when they watched, you know, the fire, firework tents and stuff, they were giving donations and stuff, but that's what they've been surviving off, donations, basically. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Arroyo.
Just wanted to thank everybody. A couple of Thursdays ago, we had our public works, and that was a little warm, I think we had a pretty good showing, and everybody enjoyed the shit that I did.
I wanted to be sure everyone had the Bright Futures Annual Breakfast on their calendars if you didn't receive that email or an invitation. It is on August second, from seven thirty to eight thirty in the morning at the Community Center. And that's a partnership, kind of led by the school district, but to help serve our kiddos in Green Valley.
Two things really quickly. First, I don't know if anybody's reached out to you, Alderman Totten, but there should be a, a survey out right now for the summer, early fall Board of Alderman meeting. If you have not seen that, please check your email and reply to that. I have Sarah actually handling that, that poll, so once we get the results from everybody's availability, we will go ahead and schedule that dinner. And then second, I wanted to let you guys know that Texas Roadhouse contacted us. This year, we did the rib eating contest, we had support from VIPS, they showed up in force up there.
I think they need to eat next year.
Yeah, unfortunately, our conference couldn't, couldn't keep up with that.
We're going to do some training or something, this is getting embarrassing.
Yeah.
Three years in a row.
But the good news is, is that Blue Springs will be splitting proceeds with us, so we found out today that that amount is going to be about twelve hundred dollars that the VIPS will be getting from the fundraiser. And so on that note, it can be part of future, yeah, board discussions, essentially what the, the city has to have is, you know, some sort of service agreement with the nonprofit in order to be able to donate. So that's conversations that we can have, absolutely, no doubt. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Alright. Next up, the Board of Alderman reports and comments. Alvin Stratton.
Nothing at this time.
Alvin Totten.
Well, I'd just like to say, I had a good time at the Public Works, and I was totally impressed with, actually, it was Officer Youngs that sat there, and a mother came up with about four little kids, and you can imagine how, that they wanted their picture taken, and he took the time. And by the time that happened, others were coming up to take pictures with him, and then the original woman come back and said, oh my gosh, I'm glad you're here. She wanted to have her nephew's picture taken too, but I had a good time with everything, and I learned a lot. And on about the July fourth, I want you to know, I was impressed with one family on my street. They had two little kids, eleven and fourteen. Dad went in and got them the dustpan and the broom, and they cleaned up everything in front of their house, so I was proud. Other than that, huh?
Alvin Haley.
Rick, can, can you guys, one of you guys contact the state board, whoever we need to talk to about the horrible spot that's starting to fester again in front of Price Chopper. It's, I'm sure part of it's with the heat, but the same spot that Mr. Coleman mentioned in the spring is going to fail probably very soon. Appreciate it, thank you.
Alvin West.
Nothing at this time, no.
Alvin Bammon.
I just have a few things to share with everyone regarding some school district information. The school board, the district's only approved their budget for this coming school year. Looks like they were able to maintain the same reserves for the coming year that they were able to retain in the prior year, which is about twenty-six percent of their budget. So that's somewhat over and above what state law requires as a minimum for doing, they seem to be in our child, maintaining those reserves. The early childhood addition has been completed, raised beyond five. The big addition over here at the high school is running ahead of schedule, of all the good, sort of good weather.
Driving.
Favorable weather. Acceptance, maybe there's a better way to put that. They have extended an offer of employment and been accepted to new directorate bands. I've gone to meet Daniel Ferrar from Colorado, he'll come and put some big shoes there. And then also learned that the district's assessed valuation numbers are starting to come in. Looks like there's an increase there of about four percent. Imagine something, somewhat similar, or possibly consistent to three months. We think about levy rates and accelerated debt, address some of those things, and there'll be some opportunities, hopefully, to talk about that.
Uh, next up, Mayor's report. I don't know what the cross street is over there, Rick, I'm sure you're aware of it because the thing is huge, but it's on Tisha Lane. It's, I don't know if I'd call it a poddle at this point.
Uh-oh.
Uh, they're doing all that construct, they're doing, they're building, they're building their homes in there, and cement trucks and everything are just ripping that. I don't know what you'd call it right now. You know, I'm aware, it's Tisha, whatever that cross street is. I'll take a look, it's huge, I'm sure someone's already noticed that one turned it in. It's not really a poddle, it's kind of graved up. Uh, that's all I have, I don't think we'd have any for an executive session unless someone has one. Alright, and I've seen one, unless someone has something else for regular session? Not, we won't.